September 18th, 2018, Select Board meeting in attendance Chairman Deedy, Mr. Fox, Mr. Moguln, and Cindy Pendleton.
Good evening, folks. It's time for public comment. Should you have anything to say, please state your name and address for the record, and if you are taping or anything like that at the meeting, it'd be nice to let us know. Your name, sir?
Peter Spotts with the Southwick News. I'm recording the meeting.
Wonderful. If anyone has any issues? Don't see any?
Take it up with him.
Alright. So Edgewood Golf Course is first. Oh, I'm so sorry. Moment of silence from Mr. Miller from our Emergency Management, and you had a long little history with him?
He was very active in our VFW, World War II veteran.
You sat with him at dinner one night, didn't you?
We did. We had a very lovely dinner. He could tell you stuff for days, and he was just a very nice man. Very smart, very dedicated to the town, very dedicated to VFW.
I also had Shriners.
Absolutely.
And he did ask this past, well, a couple of days before he passed, asked Sergeant Sanders to take over the collection of those tops for soda cans. He asked him, and Sergeant Sanders visited him along with several other police officers. So Sergeant Sanders will be collecting those tops and going over to the Shriners Hospital with him.
Wonderful.
And then, you know, I'd just like to reflect on the fact that Bob was 91 years old and still marching, marched in the honor guard last November 11th. You know, you couldn't ask for a more dedicated individual.
Okay. Now, I want to do the public comment. Hearing for Edgewood Golf Course. This is all I gotta read.
And then you got your steps, right?
You have.
You hand to the folder yet? Saw the red thing.
Well, I did. There you go.
Barking over here.
Same thing there, too. Alright, notice is hereby given under Chapter 138 of the Massachusetts General Laws that Edgewood Golf Course of Southwick, Inc. has requested a public hearing to change the manager from Laura Galarani to Robert J. Mucha?
Muhha.
Muhha. Not even close.
That's right.
Junior. The public hearing is to be held on September 18th, 2018, at 6:10 PM. For the selectmen Joseph Deedy, Russell Fox, and Doug Moguln. Need a motion to open the hearing?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Already read the legal ad, that's good. Alright, any paperwork from anybody we need to have?
Nope.
So what's going on up there? What's the game plan?
Well, I'm taking over-
Condos in?
No, 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 no.
Maybe the hills of Southwick?
No, no, we're actually benefited quite well from-
That's what we would hope.
Nobody would figure, yeah. With the weather, you know, if we had great weather, we'd have, we'd have a great year. We're having a good year.
Right.
Golf course is in great shape. I did hire Frank Powers, who was the general manager at Southwick. He's on my staff.
Nice.
And it was a nice transition from his people to our people. We picked up probably eight to 10 tournaments and 20 to 30 members. A lot of their membership had gone to Shaker. They're now transitioning over to us. So our anticipation is another 30 or 40 members from there.
Great.
So the outlook for us looks great.
Wonderful.
You know, again, we just need a little cooperation from Mother Nature. But-
Take the members.
Saving on the irrigation today. Our ponds are full. But, yeah, just what had happened is we had a changeover in our restaurant staff.
Yep.
Paul and Lori had been there for a few years. Lori had been here quite some time.
Yeah.
She had been with Paul Bishira, and then her husband came over a few years.
Yep.
And, you know, there was just a changeover in that.
Yep.
I'm there 60, 70 hours a week, so it's kind of a natural transition for me to do that.
Sure.
I've had similar responsibilities at Shaker Farms and at my previous job in the Berchers Grenoc Country Club, where I was a general manager there also. So it was kind of a natural kind of transition to me. You know, we will be looking for a definite next year, full-time person who's over there. Right now, I'm doing it all.
Right.
Which is fine. You know, we're towards the end of the year.
Yep.
You know, we're looking at, our year generally is the week before Thanksgiving, give or take. So the near, we're more near the door than the front door.
Building for next year.
Yep.
Alright, anyone in the room in favor? State your name for the record. Wonderful. Anyone here against it? That might could be one person we never should wait.
Ghost.
Could be the deciding factor. Who is it? Oh. Okay. Alright, so I need a motion to close the hearing.
So move.
Quick question.
Yes.
Do you have to be tip certified for this and everything?
Yes, I do.
And you already are?
Yeah.
Second the motion.
Any questions for him, I'm sorry.
No.
Alright. Motion made second, all those in favor?
Aye.
It's closed. Okay, now I need a motion to grant change of manager.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Have a nice night. Thanks for coming on.
Great. Thank you, guys. Drive safe.
I'll call you when it gets back from the ABCC, we can switch your licenses.
Alright, great.
Anything we have to sign here?
No.
Thank you, sir. Alright.
Do your warrant stuff.
May as well, because those folks aren't here yet, right?
6:20.
Oh, thank you. We've got a few minutes, sorry.
About 15 minutes.
Payroll warrant 1-9-0-6-B dated 9/10/18 in the amount of $713,924.46. So we have to make a motion for these, or just?
Just ignore.
Okay, and the other payroll warrant 1-9-0-7-B dated 9/10/18 in the amount of $75. Must have been a speeding ticket. Alright, payroll warrant 1-9-0-6 dated 9/4/18 in the amount of $225,291.22. And then it looks like there's another one here. Payroll warrant 1-9-0-7 dated 9/20/18 in the amount of $228,081.12.
I don't know if that date's correct, Cindy. 9/20?
I was given it from Carl, but I will.
Yeah.
Yeah, because sometimes payroll warrants are-
They be-
I always-
I'll check it. I'll check it.
But I, that might be-
Did you?
Right.
I'll check it.
To be amended to yesterday.
We'll look into that. In regular session-
Yeah, because if you do, if you add 14 days to the payroll ahead, it's the 18th, the payroll top, one date of 9/4.
Right.
Yeah, so I'll check it.
It's not 9/18/20, so it's definitely typed.
Right.
That is not the 20th.
It's still been signed.
Yeah. Either way, it's signed. Everybody will get their pay. We don't need a screaming conversation tomorrow morning.
Checks are good.
Checks, well, I don't think checks are good.
Well-
At least if you type that one written and signed.
I rushed in because we get our stipend on this.
Yeah, you should have seen them.
Yeah, so when he told me that, I said, "I'll be right down to sign it."
I haven't seen a stipend since I got here. And that was the whole deal.
I think Russ is gonna go like this.
We get five grand a year, so I said, "Honey, I'm gonna buy a hot rod. Okay, I'm gonna save it for you." Nothing. Not a damn thing. Alright.
You're on the same plan as me.
Yeah. You notice that plan? I didn't think we were getting paid anymore personally. I thought the town didn't pass. Alright, regular session minutes for 9/5/18?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Poll hearing guy's not here. Alright. So.
Think you gotta go to 6A.
Yeah, 6A, sir.
Alright, thanks, guys. Look at that, that's a hole. Voices are getting thicker.
That's done.
Fire Department.
Yep.
Alright, so we need to appoint, it looks like you guys missed one while I was gone, Anthony Agati?
Angada.
Angada was accidentally committed. Alright, so I need a motion for Anthony for the Southwick Fire Department?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I wasn't the one I think anyone else. Alright, so payroll change. Okay, so this is going to be the-
ACO.
ACO appointment. So is she already on? Is she already appointed?
No, that's why we're here.
Alright.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
See what I'm pointing and signing that?
Yes. So I need a motion.
It's in the back, too, I think.
Yeah, that's what I was looking, it's kind of backwards. That's what we posted for it. So I need a motion to fill this part-time vacancy, and the person we want to put in there is going to be-
Here.
Liz Ann?
Liz Ann.
Liz Ann Bennett?
Bennett.
So I need a motion for part-time Liz Ann Bennett.
So move.
Second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we all sign it, or just one? No, all three of us.
Yep.
Scribble small. When is the time to update the fall schedule?
Because I need to, I need to book some hearings.
Select Board Fall Schedule. Alright, guys.
Last meeting is October 1st. That's on your summer schedule. The next meeting, a week later, is Columbus Day. So that would be the 8th.
Right.
I'm not sure if we're gonna stay, uh, stay on Tuesdays?
Yep, we're staying on Tuesdays.
Okay, so.
Alright, next meeting is when?
The 1st.
The 1st on a Monday?
Yeah, that was put on your schedule.
Okay.
I don't know if there was a reason for it.
And actually, we gotta keep it there.
I think that's a reason.
Yeah, you can keep that, right?
Yeah, because I questioned it when we did it in the very beginning.
Okay, that's fine.
Somebody had a reason, I just can't remember what.
Oh, we got reasons.
So we're gonna skip, stick on Tuesdays, so we-
So you wanna do the night?
The 16th?
We're gonna do the day after Columbus Day, or no?
Normally, we don't meet a holiday week.
Okay, so 16th, the 23rd, the 30th.
Can I make a suggestion?
Oh, please do.
You know?
I didn't realize you were Italian.
Well, if we could, if it works, can we go back to 6:50?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. Are you okay with later, or?
Good, fine with it.
Right. The only reason is-
Your wife's starting to cook again?
No, no, we've kind of, most boards meet at 7 o'clock.
Is that why we have low attendance, you think?
Well, it's not so much that, is, you know, some people have expressed it's difficult to meet earlier meetings, and I think we even said something to our counterparts over at the school region.
Yeah, they're going later.
And now they're going earlier. They're going back to-
Yeah, 'cause they have invited you.
Yeah, so.
So you wanna write a letter to the school department saying you want them later, but-
I, in a nice way, I'd like to-
But we better be later first.
Right. In a nice way, I'd like to say, I don't, I know why we did it during the summer months.
Yeah.
Because we don't have the workload, but now that you're-
No, you're right.
To be into budget seasons and all sorts of things like that, I'd like to express to them that it's very difficult for me, people to make 5 and 5:30.
So you want a letter sent to them?
True.
And now I, let's set our house in order first.
Oh, yeah, they don't listen to our tapes, so we'll be fine. Yeah.
We can always say we've moved our-
We're back to our off-time schedule. Yeah, we're back to our traditional schedule.
And I mean, it's up to them. They're separately elected officials, and they make their own decisions, and-
We can put a budget in there, right?
Right. I'm just expressing concern to the people that can't make meetings at those times.
So you're okay with the 6:40?
Yeah, 6:50.
6:50, whatever.
40, 50, don't care.
Yeah, I don't care. Are you okay with the dates we just discussed?
Yep.
Okay.
We're gonna be back to every Tuesday, so.
Tuesdays, I think. Yeah. My ski business will start up shortly, December 8th, so, which I have Tuesdays off, so-
So you're in good shape.
I'm fine. Do you wanna go past that month? You wanna look at the next ones while we're talking, or are we good? Are those three enough for you to-
I'm just gonna go every-
Every Monday.
Yeah, I'll go every Tuesday.
Every Tuesday. Okay. Alright, so that's done.
He doesn't hear that.
Except the week of Thanksgiving.
Of course, the other national holiday.
Well, those, I'm gonna put the schedule back in front of you after I do it.
Alright. And we have a resignation from?
Mike Shields.
Oh, really?
Well, we had two people on the Open Space from Park and Rec.
Yep.
And David D. Delore is the other one.
Yep.
And we have another individual who was chairman the last time we did it, who expressed an interest in coming back on. So Mike said he'd be happy to resign, and the other gentleman, hopefully we're gonna appoint to fill, fill that position.
So to be clear, from his brief note, he is just resigning from the Open Space Committee only.
Correct, correct.
If you were to read this too many times, it gets confusing.
Yeah.
Even though it's only one sentence. Okay.
Alright, so do we need to make a motion to take his resignation?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And then you wanna move to appoint?
Is that the next one?
Yeah.
10A.
John Stenick.
Look at that, is that the, you thought you might be getting any data?
He even attended the last meeting. He couldn't vote, but-
Go ahead.
Being the former chairman, I think it's a great addition.
Yeah.
So I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I just gave you everything I had. Purple heart signs are locations. What's the scoop on that? They're not happy, as you can recall.
I think that was just-
They're not an acceptable location according to Mass DOT.
FYI, Randy's gonna put them where they're okay.
Oh, good. Randy, you okay with that?
Yeah, I suggested new locations for those signs.
And they're happy with them?
Well, I gotta go through the process.
Oh, I got you. Right.
Go ahead, make sure you're okay with it.
Randy, if you're happy, we're happy. Well, about the signs anyways. Yep, FYI, wonderful. And it looks like the Southwick Fire Department received a grant for $58,564, which covers the compressor?
Yep.
Make a motion to accept the grant.
Do you have a second out there?
Gladly. Good job.
Excellent, sir.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so we don't have to name a road after them yet, though, right?
No, it's a fire truck.
We're not naming the fire truck after them yet, because it's only a piece of that. The deal was if he got us a free fire truck.
Correct.
So, we're paying for the fire truck. No name. Change, okay. CDBG invoice 21 for $557.54. Need a motion to sign.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Looks like it's end of Veteran Street stuff. Some housing rehab, Southwick, and community food pantry mobile thing, so. I think we all have to sign it.
You're gonna have that now, and then you're gonna have another group at the end.
6:20, they're here.
They all just came in.
Other folks for tax specification here. Dun, dun, dun. You wanna come up, or you wanna stay seated?
No, no, we love that.
Because they would like to take a picture, I think, really interested in this. The cutting-edge technology you must use to come up with this number. Please explain to us all the formulas.
Have you seen our dartboard?
Yeah.
We have six hours, so that's your, yeah, I saw that. So what's up, guys?
I think we gotta officially open the hearing.
Do I have a packet for that?
Yeah, you can read. Oh, yeah, you do. Sorry.
The one that says tax classification?
Yeah.
Yeah, alright, we gotta open the hearing.
That's just saying that it doesn't have to be advertised like it used to.
Okay, the Select Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September 18th, 2018, at 6:20 PM in the Select Board's conference room at Town Hall to decide whether or not, whether or not all classes, decide whether or not all classes of property should be taxed at the same rate for FY19. Interested taxpayers may present oral or written information on their views. And you can send that to Cindy Pendleton at southwickmass.net. A little late, hopefully you sent it, or mail to Select Board's office. Joseph Deedy, Chairman, Russ Fox, Vice Chair, Doug Moguln, the clerk. Alright, so I need a motion to open the hearing?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead, boys. We got five minutes.
We, as per usual, we would like to maintain the residential factor of one, not do a split between the residential or, you know, commercial. 88% of the town's residential, 5% is commercial, 2% industrial, rest is personal, so there's no need to put an extra burden on our, you know, commercial property. So we, that's our recommendation, to stay with the residential factor of one.
Wonderful. Any questions?
No.
Sir?
None.
Great. So I just need to make a motion?
Oh, no, we're gonna open up in public.
Oh, any public comment, I'm sorry. That long enough?
That's long enough.
I don't hear any public comment?
I'll make a motion to close the hearing, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
Sure.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alrighty.
Make a motion to accept the recommendation of the Board of Decisions.
Wonderful. Is there a second on that?
Second that motion.
Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
What would you like us to sign?
He would sign the front sheet.
Sign the front sheet.
So it would add that you read.
Superstition. Guys, thanks for coming out. I appreciate it.
See you next year, same time, same place.
Pretty much.
Thanks for the great job you do.
Yeah, we really appreciate it.
You guys.
What time are your meetings, yeah?
Uh, 5:30 on Mondays. We get in and out.
Yeah, understand.
You have to ask.
Thank you for your time.
Of course he did.
Completely understand.
When you're, when you're old, you have to get the better of yourself.
Well, you do, and you got daylight when you drive home. I understand.
When you're retired.
And I'm retired.
Yes, I'm completely, and we're happy you're still involved.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Okay, guys, have a nice-
Thank you.
Great.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Planning board meets at 7:00.
Yes, I was just doing it for fun. Poll hearing? No?
Yeah.
Alright, just checking.
Maybe he's not coming.
Okay.
Do we have it anywhere?
Alright, 250th Celebration Committee Appointment.
You can, yeah, you got-
Linda McQuade.
Well, that's just in front of me, 14, eh?
There's, there's actually a list, the last thing, if you wanna do all three.
Yep.
The last paper, I believe.
The last paper in this packet? Go deep. Pass the personnel, oh, yes. Alright, so I need a motion to accept Ken Olson, Linda McQuade, and Juliette Mason?
Yep, so move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And that's for the 250th Committee. Let's just sign this one. Those two papers, Sarah, just so you know. They're already planning the Veterans Day Parade. No, I don't, it's just-
They're ahead of it.
You know, it's 85 degrees out and sunny, you're not even thinking that.
I surely didn't think about it this morning.
No, no, I didn't, but I just see plenty of leaves on the ground, so I said, "Oh, that's time."
Yeah, that was the week.
Yeah. Okay, Veterans Day Parade permit. Need a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That's good, Troy Hankins actually pulled the paper.
There is a follow-up letter under the chair mail, where they're asking us if we wanted to do a float.
For this thing?
Because this is the 100th anniversary of Armistice Day, of the ending of World War I. So they're trying to do a bigger parade.
Okay.
So, it's food for thought.
Oh, I thought you wanted to make a motion to put you in charge of building a floating month.
Second.
And storing it, right? Till the 250th.
You brought it up under chair mail, I just assumed.
If we wanted to-
I see that excitement in your eye, I didn't know. Or you're just switching. I wasn't sure which it was.
It did say Town Hall, so I think it's something up to the employees and staff at Town Hall.
Okay.
You know, so I think-
So we'll take all that under advisement, yeah.
I think if we could send out maybe something to the staff to see if they would be interested in doing it.
We probably could get a bunch of us to do it. We probably could.
Well, could, I'll, I'll-
I'll try.
Ask the Chair to grant that, that memo, go out to the staff.
So that means the senior bus will be full that day.
And they're gonna have to perk outside.
Yeah.
Well, they do have that trolley.
They did a great job in the last-
They do, Mr. Um-
Yeah, and he bought that.
He did. The gentleman had two of them. I looked at them years ago and I couldn't afford them.
Did he buy two of them?
He didn't buy them both. He said he just bought one. The old Riverside Park trolley.
Yeah, yep.
They've been sitting in Agawine for years.
Some people together. Do we get to do whatever we're up with the float?
Well, they know. They like it to have a-
Just no, just no.
Government theme or-
Just no.
Or World War I theme.
A government theme?
World War I. Okay. Alright, next up is the CDBG FYO for discharge of lean for 12 Eagle Street. This must be this in front of me, right? Those are the same proceeds.
Make the motion to have the Chair authorize the Chair to sign?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Town owner agreement for 16 Granville Road.
I didn't hear from either. I think it's under chair mail. Is that right?
Yes. Town owner agreement for housing rehab.
Oh, that's what that is, okay.
Oh, is that a separate one? Different one? Okay, I understand correctly.
Different one. All right, so this is.
That's different person, yeah.
Yep.
Do you have sixteen A?
I have sixteen A, I put back.
Error with the numbering.
Okay.
Okay, I think.
But they said mine was the only one that was wrong.
Yeah, I got seventeen A.
I have.
For, that we already signed, that one away.
Sixteen A, okay.
Seventeen A.
Seventeen A is sixteen Granville Road.
Okay, that's what you're on now.
Yep.
Yep.
Lorraine B. Converse, under the property.
She signed it.
Yep.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
This for the Chair, yeah.
Oh, for the Chair to sign, okay, thank you. Do you, you want that?
No, give that to the rest.
You have the Chair to sign, so I don't want to give it to the rest, okay.
Are we all signing? I guess so.
Just sign it.
Doesn't matter.
Yeah.
Some chair mail items.
Yeah, that should be chair mail, the next one.
The next one should be the chair mail? Oh, the Coche thing?
Yeah.
There's a bunch of them in there.
All right, so next up is a, um, recognition from Sheriff Coche for Detective Sergeant Thomas Krucka in regards to a situation we had in the town of Southwick. Should I read the whole thing?
I, I don't think you need to read the whole thing, Mr. Chairman, it's just recognizing the great staff and professionalism that we have in our local police department.
Sounds wonderful. All right. At the same time, under chair mail, I'll just not do it, there's a donation to the Southwick Citizens Police Academy for twenty-five dollars, and it is from.
I can't see the name.
All right. Louis Alberti. So I need a motion to approve the twenty-five dollars.
So moved.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, we've got a couple of thank you letters already in there. Yep, more chair mail. Need a motion to authorize the C A O and Chairman to accept highest surplus property bids for bills of sale, bill of sales and executive, all necessary, and to execute all necessary documentation.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Did that backhoe make it to that surplus stuff?
It was an issue of the title, hasn't returned.
Oh, that's right. That's the backhoe.
Yeah.
There is an issue. All right, so sign this one. That's right.
They reversed the title and the VIN number of the original bill of sale.
That's happened.
Yeah, it does. I thought it was a bigger piece of the ground, I didn't think it was that old, though. There you go. All right, so take care of Krucka.
Next one is the invitation for the Veterans Day Parade.
Which we did.
Yep.
We did it with the other one.
Yep.
So the new ribbon cutting, which we're, I was supposed to ask you.
I'm, uh, yeah.
You're in it?
Yeah.
Okay, there should be a marker in there.
We did donations, invitation for the Veterans Day Parade.
Yeah?
I think that thing will need time.
Okay. He's got the original.
Sorry, okay, here we go. All right, so Veterans Day Parade will be, da-da-da-da-da, on Veterans Day, right? First, we have our community Veterans Day Parade.
Yeah, I'll, I'll bring it up again.
Hundredth anniversary, yeah.
To see who's gonna march.
Southwick, well, I think we're all marching. The parade will line up at the subway like usual at ten-thirty on Saturday, November tenth, and it will kick off promptly at eleven AM. They'll go down the street to the War Memorial, and that's where it ends, right? That's not the long one.
No.
Oh, okay. Wonderful. You can let them know we'll be there. All right, and then there's ribbon cutting, Mr. Moblin, I understand you're going to.
Yeah.
Get your mower fixed and get your ribbon cut at the same time. Wonderful, you get to sign this?
Yeah.
Boy, he's clerking good. I was never that good of a clerk.
Get your green sleeves.
Yeah. I put twelve forty-five in my calendar, right, lying in myself now.
You know, I've tried that, uh, with the alarm clocks, doesn't work.
Chairman, six-thirty poll hearing?
Yep.
He must not be coming.
If there was someone here to have a poll hearing, well, it's out. Can we do it without him? We need to, right?
Yep, it's basically very kind of driving, are you familiar with it?
Yeah, I've, I've hit my share of poles growing up with a car, yeah, I'm very familiar with poles.
How many do you own?
The hydrant costs more than the poles, though. Oh, that's true, that's true. All right.
Well, we got, is that seventy-six, no, we haven't done it yet.
Okay, so there's nothing, is there a hearing to read?
No.
Okay, all right, so in front of me is a request for a loophole on Sam West Road, close to driveway number twenty-five, actually across the street, and, um.
There are only three abutters total.
Yep, yes. That about TJ Berkmolt, Mary Grady, and Raphael Vega.
Randy recommended that?
Yep, I got a letter from Randy in here.
And I emailed the gentleman for forms to sign, so.
Okay. So do I need a motion to open the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And discussion was the, uh, Everforce proposal to install a fully-owned forty-foot Class II pole between poles eighty slash B six and eighty slash B seven. This pole will hold a transformer bank for the service at thirty-two Sam West Roads, Sam West Road. Proposal pole will be labeled eighty dash B six, now, yeah, there is a new building going in there, I think, right, there's a little industrial building there, that's what it's for. All right, I need a motion to close the hearing.
Well, you might want to just see if anybody would like to speak in favor or against.
Anybody would like to speak in favor or against the poll hearing? Maybe when we change our meeting to later evening hours, we'll get more participation. But as right now.
Now we poll.
Right now, I just don't see anyone really getting involved.
Polls are popular.
You know, um, and, and future reference, if this building gets finished and it's a business, Mr. Moblin is, uh, for to do the ribbon cutting ceremony at that, too.
I'm all ribbon cutting out there.
Make a motion to close the hearing, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Second to that motion?
Yeah, sure.
All right, all those in favor, aye, so it has been closed.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Or second.
Sure.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Your poll has been approved. All right, we did the celebrate Southwick appointments, that's done, and in front of me is a contract amendment number one for a thousand dollars. Base project was twenty-four, adding a thousand, it's a change order for seventy-six Bungalow Street.
So moved.
Good months came in higher than expected.
Shocker, second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
So we could get rid of the second celebration.
Rehab project, okay.
Yeah, we did it.
So who signs it, just one of us, it looks like, I'll just send you. There, send me. All right, so that's done, what other appointments we have, the review draft at six forty, we'll take it now, of N O I for stormwater plan and D P W.
That would be Randy.
Randy, sir, how are you?
Oh, good, yourself?
I'm all right, sir.
Big packet, it was in the front of your actual folder.
Oh, yes, all those packets. Hey, I got some broken glasses, I can do that.
Yeah.
All right, sure.
So we've been talking about this stormwater permit for several years now, and it is in effect, and the first task, or the first deliverable that is due is, is called notice of intent. So the permit itself, I have a couple pages of it, it's probably this thick, okay? This is kind of the meat of the permit, but, but what this notice of intent states is, this is, this is the town's way of telling the authorities, M S D, P E P A, how and when we're gonna implement these tasks that are required in a permit. So this is the form that they have identified, they set up for us to fill out. So if you go through the pages, I'll just skip to, uh, starting on page four.
All right.
Um, I, I guess just step back, I have this, you've seen this spreadsheet in the past, right?
Oh, yeah.
This kind of follows the same format of this spreadsheet, so when tasks are gonna be done, um, is really intended as this N O I.
Right, they, they, right, they're holding us to our feet down finally, saying, okay, let's go.
So, the issue that I have, the concern I have is, you know, we've talked about this, I've asked for money, I've asked for assistance, I've asked for support, hasn't been granted. So, there's only so much we can do, that I can do, with what I have available, my resources to actually implement this permit. So I need to know from you, what, what is your goal, what's your vision, so we can fill out this notice of intent, and let the authorities know what we're gonna do, or what we're not gonna do.
We want to start with what, you said number eleven, and go through those one at a time maybe?
Sure, sure.
Cause I take it those as the pressing one?
These are the most, uh, that are most concerning to me, that's correct, yes.
Number eleven.
So eleven, it's, uh, starting on page nine.
Okay, let's get to nine.
So this, eleven and twelve are tied together, this is a stormwater system map, phase one and phase two. So, this is, if, if you look on this table here, right, the measurable goal is what's, what's stated in the permit, when, when that task must be completed, okay? So, we are required to update our stormwater map within phase one, within two years, and then phase two within ten years of the permit. Now, we have, we had, um, an intern help us over the summer, right? Do some mapping efforts, that, that was what he was focusing on, but, with even, you know, we gotta remember, he's just a high school intern, he's not gonna solve the world for us, okay? So there's only so much we can ask him to do, and what we can expect of him to do, and obviously, he's not here now, he's, he's back in school. So I, I'm concerned that we're not gonna meet these deadlines, um, on the stormwater system map.
Well, so we, we're updating phase one, and we have to do that within two years, and then phase two, we have to do within ten years?
Yes, yep.
Okay, so if we're updating it, you don't think we, if we come up with some money, we wouldn't be able to do it in two years?
Well, that's the big if, if you get some money. That, that's, I guess, the, what I know from you is, are we gonna get money to do these tasks?
But who, who would need to do that? You said we had an intern that did some mapping.
Yep.
What kind of level are we talking about?
Someone who's, who's familiar with stormwater systems, and how they, how they work, how they flow.
So we're.
Someone who can read, someone who can read ASBIL plans, because we're, we're transposing information from ASBIL plans, subdivisions, onto our, into our stormwater mapping.
So who, who would be someone like that? Are we talking Ty and Von, are we talking about Pioneer Valley Planning, are we talking about?
We could hire someone from Ty and Von, we could hire Pioneer Valley Planning, we could hire, you know, a new staff member.
Okay.
All the above.
Okay, so we have two years to do eleven, and we have ten years to do twelve?
That's correct, yep.
Okay. Then we go down to fourteen, you said?
Fourteen, yeah, fourteen is the, uh, assessment and priority ranking of outfalls. So once you have the, the, uh, the map somewhat in place, you're supposed to identify where the problem areas are, um, and, and that's based on issues we've had in the past with, with contamination, maybe based on land use, where there may be potential issues.
Yeah.
Um, so that, that, this is a, this is a time issue, there's, I mean, we need, we need time, someone to actually kind of dive into that, that task.
But if we need eleven done before fourteen, but you're only giving us one year on fourteen, shouldn't we change that to two years?
The, these are the, the dates delivered by, in the permit, not, not, I didn't, I didn't come up with these dates, these are what's D P saying, you must do this by this date.
You must do or start by this date.
No, this is, well, so the, the N O I says the beginning year of B M P implementation, right?
Right.
So that's, that's what I've identified here, the beginning year.
Okay.
But there is a, there, but some of these tasks are due year one, some are due year two, some are due, due year, year five or ten.
Okay, so, but it does say complete initial priority ranking within one year, so it's not really the.
That, that's what I say, would you take what you have now, right, doing a set, initial assessment?
Have we identified all the outfalls yet?
I didn't.
I remember that was in one of the early.
That is the biggest task, and that's what we had Chris do, help us out with over the summer, identify some outfalls. Some are easy, some are right on the road, and you gotta go with your GPS unit and, and locate it, take pictures of it. Some of them are in the middle of woods, you know, fifty feet and a hundred feet, and, and it could take you two hours to find it.
Like, if no one's been there.
And we have a hundred and eighty or so outfalls.
Well, so we know them all now.
Well, we have a hundred, we, we, we assume it's about a hundred and eighty or so, that's based on what we know and what areas.
I'm not being a jerk, I just remember some of the, that was part of the discussion, that we had to identify all the outfalls, and we weren't a hundred percent positive, we had them all.
But would a hundred and eighty, with the work, the work we've done so far, would that, in your opinion, satisfy what they're looking for? Is that an initial thing?
They want all of them done. They want them all mapped, eventually.
Yeah, I, I understand that, but I'm talking about fourteen, complete initial priority. So if we initially know we have a hundred and eighty.
Yep.
Have we in spirit?
The, the issue, the, we, we have them on a map, right? So initially, but they, my, my, my point is, we need time, we need staff time to identify, to actually look at the map, look at the land uses, look at the historical issue, you know, where we had historical problems, and, and, and come up with these problem areas, potentially, that's, that's a time issue.
Okay, and who would do that, in your opinion?
A consultant or, you know, staff.
Okay.
But, but I don't think that's me, I don't think that's Dick, I don't think that's Chris, we've already taxed out where we're, where we are now. So we're talking new staff. When I say staff, we're talking new staff.
Okay. All right, fifteen, dry weather screening?
This is, um, probably between the dry weather screening and the wet weather screening, which is, we'll come up on, are the probably the two most costly endeavors. All these, a hundred and eighty outfalls, we've identified, right, we have to actually go during a weather event and sample them, and take that sample to a lab, and have it tested for a whole host of contaminants. We gotta pay, that, that's all on us.
Yeah, right, of course, all of this is on us.
But fifteen, if I read it, it's just to develop a sampling, screening procedures.
Within one year.
One year.
All, and then.
And then have it all done in three years, right?
Right.
Okay, so, all right.
Well, develop a sampling, it's easy, we already know, you gotta go get the sample, and you gotta get it done.
Right.
So.
A lot of these procedures, um, I'm getting a lot of assistance through Pioneer Valley Planning.
Yeah.
With, so, I mean, that's my goal, is to get the resources I need for those type, type of issues.
Right.
My issue is, you know, outside of going to those meetings.
You still need staffing to get this done.
Having halftime and, and cost.
Sixteen, you highlighted?
So this is sixteen is updating, updating the ranking, so once you do your initial assessment, right?
Yeah.
And, and fourteen.
Yeah.
And you finished your stormwater mapping, right, in item eleven, then you have to update your priority ranking of outfalls. So, you do your initial, and then you do your final.
Okay, and that's a three-year thing.
That's after three years of the, right, that's how that, that all dovetails together.
So does all this fall under one new person? I mean, we can go through this whole thing like we're doing, but, but realistically, what are we coming back to?
It's a full-time job for a person.
You need a full-time staffer.
Well, that's for.
That understands, and I know what you asked for, I get that.
I've asked for a part-time staff, but their primary focus is this permit.
Literally this permit.
Yeah, this is, this is, I mean, in Westfield, hire a full-time staff, this is what he does, this is all he does.
Every day, literally.
Yep.
So a part-time staff person should clean, or get the ball rolling on these projects, directly.
Someone who has some knowledge and expertise in.
In, in the field, absolutely.
Stormwater systems, that would be a tremendous help, yeah.
No, I was just going, trying to go over the ones that we.
No, no, understood, yeah, yeah, yeah.
To see what, you know, to.
So.
Just so that you know, there's. Some are three years, some are one year, some are two years, some are ten years, some are five years.
Yeah, but even the three years, once we get rolling with a part-time staff member, it'll just all morph into getting done.
Right. And then like twenty is conduct training annually.
Right.
What have, what have you seen about training as staff?
So we, that's something we do every year, right, but again, this training is gonna be more comprehensive than the past.
Okay.
So this, this is a money issue, right? We don't have the funding, we don't have the funds to do the training that we need to on a new permit.
The, the group that, where we funded money so that you could go to that group and stuff like that, have they looked at having, you know, a trainer that could go around to all the communities, or have that trainer come and we have one joint meeting or training session?
We haven't gone to that level. We have done some, um, like under the I D D program, which is the sampling program.
Yeah.
We've done some training videos.
Okay.
So which we distribute to all the, all the member towns, so.
Okay.
How to, you know, take your samples, what you need to do, when you do certain tasks.
Okay.
But that, that's been done, but but an annual employee training, that is not.
Okay, and when they say annual employee training, who do you envision or or think would be, would it be one employee, would it be all our employees?
That's all town employees. So, so we have, we, under our current permit, we do, we do a training, um, a good housekeeping training every year. We hire Ty and Bond, we hire Ty and Bond to do it.
Yeah.
And we've invited planning, conservation, building department, other town departments, and they've always attended those meetings as well.
Okay.
So this isn't intended just for D P W, but this is more, you know, anybody who's associated with, you know, stormwater on site. You know, it's not just D P W.
Right.
This is, this is a multi-department issue.
Could you go back to your group and kind of throw up the flag or run up the flag, the idea of a joint thing?
Sure.
To save money.
Sure.
Uh, for all of them. And then the last thing you had was twenty-one, Randy. The developed plan within four months of permit effective date.
Oh, you know what, that was four years, sorry.
Years.
My bad there. Uh, so this is, uh, because we're in the stormwater, we're in the Long Island Sound.
Yeah.
Watershed, right? So Long Island Sound has a, has a nitrogen issue. So now all the communities that that flow into that Long Island Sound require to come up with this identification report, okay? So basically looking at all of our land uses, all of our sources, potential sources of nitrogen, how we can identify, how we can eliminate them. So this is something that, you know, I don't think we have the skills and how that would be a consultant that would have to develop that report for us.
So that one is definitely a consultant.
Yep.
Provided we have all the other work done.
So probably, we've identified like two or three where definitely a consultant would have to be hired and and the rest is something that's probably a staff.
Future staff.
Yeah, and then there's more of us too, you just got, you said the twenty-one, but there's a, I didn't wanna cut you off.
No, 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 I, I just wanted to go over the ones that you said, you know, to.
Well, you stopped at twenty-one.
Okay.
There's a blank page and then it picks up at twenty-four.
You got it. To twenty-seven, is that the next? After twenty-one?
Yep.
That's four years and that involves just about everything, all town property, including the school, right?
Yeah, so this is, uh, looking at all of our town infrastructure, all of our stormwater systems, and and we're actually required to keep an inventory of at least five locations where we can do a potential improvement, we call that retrofit. Um, think of all the, the stormwater improvements we've done in the lakes over the past few years, you know, with the S three nineteen grants.
Yep.
Those types of projects are what they're looking at. And what they're asking us to do is to report, identify, keep a list of at least five locations and then I think in year five or year six, it's to actually, item twenty-eight, retrofit B M Ps, is to actually construct one of those improvements.
So and actually, so they're talking within five years to start actually doing construction, where we're outlaying.
Yep.
Money for actual physical work to be done to mitigate.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then we go to twenty-nine.
Yeah, this is a probably a consultant issue, um, developing an O and M plan for all of our municipal activities, municipal properties. So town hall complex, police fire, cemetery, parking wreck.
Now, is that something our potential future staff could do?
Depending on their expertise, I don't.
Yeah.
If it's an entry-level person, probably not, but if they have some experience in that, potentially, yes.
Would that be something that group would be able to do together?
I think these are specific for each property.
It wouldn't be a general policy on.
Mr. Vice Chairman, that also could be something that we have, um, just funded this year, the feasibility study for the, the buildings. That should get rolled into that, because if they're doing something, maybe that is something they could take into account.
Excellent idea, excellent idea. Uh, Cindy, you wanna make note of that so that we can make the C A O aware of that before we, uh?
Like, if they're gonna have to put a roof on this place, maybe there's something they can do with.
Run off from the roof, run off from the parking lot.
Green building. Energy generation, green roof, whatever.
And the school is looking at paving, so, uh, we can make them aware that, uh, perhaps when they're looking at the paving to, uh, look at runoff there.
That's for the O and M procedures, right, number twenty-nine? Number twenty-seven.
Oh, whatever, it's twenty-nine.
No, it's twenty-nine, sorry. Twenty-seven is, twenty-seven kind of fits in there nice too, though.
Thirty-one is infrastructure.
It's kind of tied into the item twenty-nine before.
Same thing.
So very similar, yeah.
Okay. Thirty-two is stormwater pollution prevention plan, and that's, that, that again is a plan, right?
It's a specific for each, each, each property, yes.
For each property?
Yep.
Okay, so that those all tie in together then?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, there's gonna probably be some overlap in the plans, but yeah, I mean, they are somewhat related.
And thirty-three, we're already doing?
We do do thirty-three, yep.
Yep.
Yep, but the issue is cost there and if we have to, so, so the issue that I could potentially see with item thirty-three is how we manage the material. So right now, we bring it to a land, our, our former landfill, right, and we use it as cover. That may not.
Fly.
That may not be applicable anymore.
Do we know what some of the other communities are doing? Does that come up in?
Yeah, it, it, and it's, um, it's treated as, as basically solid waste. So it's trucked, it's on, just like all, all of our trash that we send out of town, it's gonna be treated just like our trash. You'd have to haul it, it would be trucked off to a disposal facility. The issue is our, our landfill, what we use now, isn't, isn't certified.
Correct.
And and it's not, and and there's a whole testing procedure that has to happen.
Yep.
So we, we can stockpile it.
Yeah.
We can test it.
Yeah.
Um, but there is a process you have to follow if you wanna keep it on-site, manage it on-site.
Some sort of filtering or cleaning.
There is a, there is a pretty comprehensive plan. I know, I only know of one local community that's actually gone through the process.
Yeah.
Of getting their catch basin material tested, Bel, town of Belcher Town.
Yeah.
And it cost them about ten, fifteen thousand dollars to develop the plan.
Yeah.
And then they were able to manage it on-site.
And you think they'd share that plan with us?
I have a copy of the plan.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I came up through, I have a copy of the plan, but we still have to have our own plan, has to be reviewed by D P E P A, there's a whole host of.
And they're probably not gonna like us doing it, uh, at our transfer facility near the, uh, Great Brook, right?
Could be an issue, yeah. Could be an issue, yeah.
Randy, on, just a follow-up on that, we've gone two years now without putting sand down on the roads, we've been using straight soil.
Mm-hmm.
Has that dramatically impacted when we do the catch basin cleanings as far as the amount of material we're pulling back out?
We are pulling less material out for sure. Um, the way the permit's written is they, we, they should never exceed fifty percent full. And we have some locations where we probably can go a year or two longer without having to, to clean them out. We still have to inspect them.
Yeah.
To make sure they're not fifty percent full, but, but still, we have some problem areas that we know we're gonna fill up every six months, so we don't have to go out there every year.
Because they just from siltation or whatever, they just, yeah.
Is that because they're not paved roads or is it because of new construction or?
Uh, all the above.
All the above.
Yeah, yeah, runoff from adjacent properties.
Okay.
Yep, all the above. So that's a cost item is.
It's a cost item, but at least we're, we can check it that we're actually attempting to do that process. And we can get all of that plan and that would give us, uh, a method to do a cost analysis, right?
Mm-hmm.
And I'm sure that somebody creative is probably already, uh, started a business plan to accept this from other communities.
And there's been talk about it, uh, it's highly regulated, so there's a lot of hurdles I gotta go through.
Yeah.
And there's not, not, no one, nothing set in place.
No.
And and I, I mean.
There might be a regional thing, just like our trash.
It could be.
Right.
They may be close and maybe far away too, you know, and I don't know, there's always gonna be a charge, right?
Yep.
They're not gonna just take it for, at no cost to us, so. There will be a charge for it.
Thirty-four, are we in compliance with that?
Uh, we.
Done what twice a year.
Twice a year is the issue, so we do it once a year now, so this comes down to a cost issue.
This was the only cost, remember?
Yeah, that's what, that's what the federal agency told me, we just have to sweep our streets twice a year and we'd be in compliance and not to worry about it.
Well.
Yeah, I know, I know.
I know.
What, what does it cost this, Randy, off the top of your head?
We spend about thirty, thirty-five thousand a year sweeping.
Thirty to thirty-five, so we're talking about sixty to seventy thousand dollars. Would, if we had to do that.
Couple hundred grand.
Well, that's where I'm, my next question.
Yeah.
Very good. But, uh, renting? To do our own?
I could look into it, I don't know.
Cause I know that Tri-County at one time, Bobby Clark was talking about that.
Okay.
For, for the town.
Right.
That we might be, you know, if you didn't want to purchase, might do a lease or a rental.
Yeah.
Uh, to save some money, but I don't know what kind of class, class of license they need.
Do you have the employee to drive it, do you have the time?
You gotta have a guy doing it.
Yeah, you're, you're still taking staffing away from somewhere else to put into that truck. That we don't have.
But when, but when you start looking at seventy thousand dollars a year and you gotta do each street.
Oh, I, I agree.
Twice.
We, we gotta start doing an analysis of whether we should purchase one, lease one, uh, contract it, or maybe get a better rate. You know, if they're doing it twice a year instead of once, I don't know. And we've already done road salt, right?
Yeah, we've got a good program, we've, uh, we're two years into it now. So, uh, I mean, that, that's just, I mean, we can do that. I, I think I may have everyone else put that number on the, on the letter here, but that's something just. We've already got the program in place, it's just me putting it on paper, saying here's whatever, that, that's not, that's not an issue.
What's thirty-six?
Uh, inspection and maintenance of stormwater treatment structures, so basically this is all of our catch basin inspections.
Oh, okay.
And drainage, drain structures, inspections.
We're doing that now.
We're doing that.
Sort of, yeah, and this is like, this is more, a little more comprehensive than what we have been doing, you know, it's more than a drive-by.
Okay. And thirty-seven is additional training.
Yep, yep.
And that's where we could hopefully see if the group would.
That could be, uh, I mean, I could look and see the larger, other communities.
Sharing their expense.
Look into that, yeah.
Man, thirty-eight, the only ones that are, I don't know, are we using any fertilizer, just the schools, right, Wally Park?
Don't know, gotta look into it. I, I gotta imagine Wally Park's got some fertilizer, that's nice grass out there.
They have a big budget line at Park. Yeah, they do.
So Wally Park is fertilizing and the schools are fertilizing. But I don't, I don't think we fertilize.
Schools do?
Yeah.
Oh, the fields at least, yeah, the playing fields.
Soccer field.
Yeah.
Can't keep it looking that nice without.
Something.
Something. So. So it's developing requirements for managing, managing fertilizer.
Yep.
So I guess we need to reach out to the school on civil issues there.
Yeah.
And make them aware of, uh, probably get Steve in here, uh, sometime for a work session.
Yeah, poor guys, now they, they finally got the sword done, they're sitting back saying, ah.
And now we're gonna.
Finally.
Now we're gonna go after them. What do you think?
Well, hey, by the way.
That's something that, this is part of the, kind of the nitrogen.
Yeah, but I mean, I know they're trying to look to reduce it, but they're talking about development requirements. Has your group talked about this at all? I mean, there's obviously, if, you know, coming from the farming standpoint.
Yeah.
You know, if, you know, if you don't fertilize, things don't grow. Um, I mean, there's a fine line there, nobody wants to over-fertilize it, not, not to my knowledge, no farmer that I know, they can't afford to do it.
Yeah.
And I don't see the town or the school over-fertilizing, I think everybody's, you know, fighting.
At the minimum.
It's probably one of those best management practice things too, where you just, you have the, the training that you go through with the people who are putting it down, don't put it in the street, cause, you know, if they, if they're, when they're overlapping their laps and putting it in the street, or, you know, make sure they are using the right, at the right rate and amount.
Yeah.
Right, that's just a good practice. Same thing with grass cuttings too.
Yeah.
You know, that they're not putting that in the street, that's gonna wash into a storm drain, that's gonna wash to an outfall and eventually end up in the Long Island Sound.
Right.
You know?
I don't know if, does Wally Park, do they have a service that does it, or do, do they lean it down themselves?
I think they do it themselves. Some of it they do, some of it they don't do, because I think it depends on what they're doing. But it's just like, you know, you get a new guy that comes in and you don't just send him out on the fertilizer machine, you, he has to attend a little video or make note, you know, go through the training of, you know, hey, don't do that.
Well, I guess then buildings and grounds and parking wreck need to be part of the work session too.
Yep.
So, this is a good conversation, but we still need to submit this N O I and, and the way I see it, there's still some question marks, you know, you've talked about if we get funding, if we get staff. Well, I need to know if that's gonna be a reality, because we gotta put some dates in here in this N O I, assuming that we are gonna get that staff and we're gonna get those resources, you know, starting next year.
Right, that's they wanna see, they wanna hear you put in there April twenty nineteen, hiring one part-time employee, blah, blah, blah.
Well, so, so I, I don't wanna put something as N O I that's not.
Right.
True.
No, I don't know, I'm, I'm with you, yeah. Right.
But I think they also understand that even if we said we were going to do it, it's not up to us. It's, it's the budget process, it's up to the voters, the town of Southland to approve the budget.
Right.
You know, we can make a case, uh, so I, I, I think that the only thing we would be able to say is that, I think this is a, you know, process that we're going to begin, but it depends on funding, because we obviously cannot give this the kind of funding on, based on your estimate of a million dollars, because that would impact some of the other town boards and commissions and things we do for the general public.
Well, he, he understands there's no million dollars out there, he gets that, he's not.
So I think the only thing we could probably say is that, that it'll be reviewed and there'd be a priority set on it to at least try to begin the process to accomplish what, what the, the intent of the program is. And that's to reduce nitrogen, right?
And that's one of the goals, one of the goals, yeah. So how, how?
Into being in control of where everything's going and understanding.
Right, so how are we gonna fill this permit here, this N O I? We're gonna have all these different tasks and we're having a, a beginning year of B M P implementation, the very last category. I guess.
So when does that have to be turned in by?
At toll first.
Of this year?
Mm-hmm.
What are some of the other communities doing, Randy? I mean, we can't be the only one here that.
Drag our feet.
Are tied on money and, you know.
You probably saw an article from Agalom, two weeks, a week ago, they're looking to fund a stormwater fund, they need two million dollars a year.
Yeah.
And that's going through the process now, that's what, this is what they're doing.
Right.
Westfield hired, you know, a full-time staff, you know, a year ago.
Yep.
Um, they could jump on this.
And the smaller communities, what are they doing?
They're doing the best they can. I mean, I, I don't know of anybody who's taking a stance, we're not gonna do it.
Right, right, understood.
All, all we've said right along is that, uh, we don't have the monies to do everything that they're asking us to do all at once, you know, and I, I don't see where that's really changing that. I, I think the only thing we can tell them is that we'll work to try to achieve what they're trying to ask us to, but.
So how do you wanna fill out this form then, that, that said, are we gonna commit to starting these tasks in the years we identify here, or should we put a to be determined?
To be determined.
Or should we just cross it entirely?
I, I would say it's, you know.
Well, the whole process is to be determined.
Give it to be determined, but I wouldn't say fiscal nineteen, I'd say fiscal slash fiscal twenty, you know, uh, on, on anything that has nineteen next to it.
So you want me to put everything that says nineteen change up to twenty?
Right.
And then?
We're in fiscal nineteen now, correct?
Right, yep.
Yes, so even, so we go through the budget process.
We've already gone through the budget process.
No, I understand that, moving forward, we'll be going through it here shortly, we're gonna blink and we're gonna be in front of another.
Fiscal twenty.
Yeah, it's right around the corner.
So that's when we're gonna have to discuss it.
Right.
Because.
So, so I just wanna make sure I'm clear, so basically you're saying everything, we're not looking to start the permit this year, we're looking to start it in F Y twenty.
I, I think that's.
All the, all the items.
Well, no, because I think some items we've already begun, you know, uh, even if it's mediocre, you know, hiring the intern, uh, doing the road sweeping, uh, you know, doing, you know, some of the training already. So I think if we, if we point out the things that in, say fiscal nineteen for those items, that we've begun that process, but I would change the other ones and give us, give us some latitude.
Okay, so everything we've done so far, keep F Y nineteen.
Right.
And then everything else, I'm, everything, where else is F Y nineteen, I'll push back to F Y twenty.
Right.
And then there are others that, you know, go beyond F Y twenty, should I push them back?
Basis off of twenty, so what was nineteen, and then you said you have four years from that, or two years from that, you push forward.
So, so just, just for example, if I go to, uh.
Number twenty-four.
So I'll push out the F Y twenty, and then item twenty-five, I'll push at twenty, twenty, twenty-two.
Right.
Right?
And then if, if you can keep us informed, you know, because like Joe said, we're gonna be starting the budget process in another couple of weeks. But if you can keep us informed about the group and, and what some of the other smaller communities are doing, maybe we can work together, you know, especially on the training and some of these other issues to, so there'd be a cost savings, so we can put additional money into, you know, that part-time staff or, or, or consulting, if we have to hire the consultant, you know.
Has this, are we the smallest one in this group?
Uh, the South Hadley, East Hampton.
Okay, so comparable, okay.
Size, yeah, I, I, yeah.
We're probably.
And are they, are they looking to hi- hire now, or? I mean, is there a theory out there where we can grab between two or three towns, one person?
That's a good idea.
I, I don't know, like, say, Randy, yeah, we got thirty-five thousand, we can get you a part-time guy.
Yep.
Okay, it, it, you know, is there other towns out there doing the same thing mentally, so maybe with a pool of dollars?
A regional.
Not that it works, because one person can't be at every place, I, I get that, but is there?
But if you had a regional person overseeing it and you brought in interns and they train the interns how to do it.
Cause even if Hadley's got money, they gotta be doing the same thing we're doing, going, what? How much? I don't care what the, I don't, I mean, look at Springfield and everywhere else, but we're all doing the same thing. There's, there, you know, Springfield's only ten times, twenty times more expensive, but it's the same thing.
But Worcester said it was gonna cost them a billion dollars.
Well, there you go, right.
Billion with a B.
Yep. And I believe it.
So South Hadley, Belcher Town, East Hampton, those are the smaller ones I'm thinking of.
Right. Cause we're going to, you know.
Rail's not in this?
No.
They just get out of it based on?
They don't open the mail.
Based on their population, so we are in MS four regulated area based on our population density. So a lot of the hill towns, they don't, they don't.
Well, yeah, we just qualify them. We're right one, ten thousand.
Does this go down into Connecticut too?
They have their own permit, their own MS four permit, which they've been working on for years.
Right.
It's not, it's separate from the state permit, the Massachusetts permit.
But I thought this was federal, this isn't federal?
It's administered by the state.
Administered by the state.
Well, so Mass is one of four states that, where the permit was administered through the federal government, now through the state. So the state of Connecticut administers the MS four program for Connecticut.
Okay.
In Mass, New Hampshire, two other states, it's administered through EPA.
Okay, but I thought Mass was trying to change that, to take it over?
There was legislation that was, uh, didn't make it through the process. It failed, I don't know, with King of the Senate or the House, uh, but it didn't make it, did not make it through last, I guess, March, April timeframe. End of their last cycle.
No, I was just wondering what Connecticut was doing. Do you have any idea comparable to what?
Like I said, they have their own permit, it does a lot of these tasks, but it's, you know, I've never looked at their permit.
Okay.
But they do, they do, say their fair share, they do their fair share, I guess.
But they've been doing it for years.
They haven't done it for a while, yeah.
So it's a whole different realm, I'm sure, of where we're at today, and where they, you know. So a part-timer will accomplish one piece of it. And then realistically, what do we, what do you, and I don't mean the million, but just, what are you thinking, so year one, the part-timers there. Between the testing and the digging and all the other small things we have to do that add up, what are you thinking there, another sixty thousand, fifty thousand?
Well, I guess I.
I don't even wanna look at that. Because that's real, no, that's real, and I get that. But I don't wanna find, I don't wanna find forty-two, five and say, damn it, I got you a guy. Then you're gonna say, great, I need a post hole digger, and I need this, and I, he's gotta have a little car, no, no, I didn't get you any of that. But boy, I got you a part-time guy, so.
Staff will go a long way.
Okay, especially at some of this, because it's really.
Well, the testing, I mean, the testing's not insignificant.
No, but it's not right.
A hundred and eighty outfalls, you gotta test twice.
Right.
And, and you gotta do the wet weather sampling, so I gotta wait till it rains.
That's why I said one eighty times, so just to, but you gotta bring it to tie and bond and have, or somebody tested it to get results, what is that each?
Two hundred a piece. I do have numbers, it's a couple of bucks a pop.
So two hundred piece times three sixty.
Quarter of my essence here, I'll tell you.
Ten thousand.
You knew he was gonna do that.
I gave you that one, Randy. It's the ground ball, buddy.
I, I know. Assume all, yeah, fall or sampling and four hundred per outfall for testing.
Oh geez, I'm off five two.
Yeah.
So four hundred times three sixty, so it's sixteen thousand dollars.
Right there, yeah.
Gotcha, right?
Yeah.
Just the testing part.
Yeah.
And we give them the old car.
So the part-time person, yeah, we're gonna have to keep, yeah, you wanna get off the bid on it. Maybe we can buy it back for.
Well, that's why it, 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 it makes sense that we've, we funded Randy to join this group and to, to. Work with the other group. If, if we started looking at this more as a regional problem, or a regional issue. There could be tremendous cost savings for all the communities involved.
I don't know if there'll be cost savings, but maybe there'll just be a reality check of, of all of us, of what we're spending versus a runaway train.
Right.
You know what I mean, if three communities are paying X, and okay, I guess that's the number we're going with, because they've all done their homework like us, and here we are. Okay.
So I need to, I will update this.
Yes.
And I'll, you need to sign it.
Of course.
So I have the last page here as yours.
Oh, for the chairman?
Of course.
So let me, let me read what it says here, it says, by either a principal, executive officer, or a ranked elected official.
Oh, that's Carl.
Or ranked elected official, ranking elected official.
Yeah, whatever you need, Randy.
Well, I have it written as all three of you, so I'm.
Oh, there you go, thank you, Randy.
Motion for the chair to sign is on the floor.
Yeah, well, didn't make it to page seven.
So what am I, who's signing it?
We're all gonna look good and try.
And we'll send, and we'll, we'll form our own cover letter that'll go off with that application.
Sure.
Believe me.
Well, absolutely, you, you, you might as well, you know.
Not that they care, but.
I just wish I had a tape recording when he told me just sweep your streets twice, and you're wearing compliance, this isn't gonna cost you a cent.
And it, and that, it's also interesting that the state didn't take it up, because they realized that it would have been an unfunded mandate. That they would have had to fund if they were gonna do it through the state.
Correct.
Right, by, by leaving themselves out, they just pushed that burden right back down on us, as an unfunded Monday, mandate.
Right.
It's just gonna kneecap everybody.
So you know there's an appeal, right, on the permit, I haven't heard any updates on the appeal, I'm just sorry to let you know.
Yeah.
It's been in the works for probably a year now.
And it's not gonna go anywhere.
Not, hope they don't.
Well, we've given you a lot of homework, Randy, street sweepers, regional programs.
I got my notes here.
I just, I, I'd have to see the numbers, I just can't imagine that, you know, the street sweeper guys that do this for, that, that, they can keep that equipment busy. Two hundred days a year.
We pay a hundred and nineteen dollars an hour, what our current rate is, for a street sweeper, for streetwear services.
And that's, but that's what our guy following the sweeper is to pick up the material.
Oh yeah, a couple guys, right?
We send, we have one, one truck that's, that follows them around, and, and they dump into our truck, and then we haul it. And they keep sweeping, and then we just move, go back to where they're at.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah.
But I mean, I just think, you know, like those guys, the, the same guys use the same equipment in a lot of different places.
Right.
I can't imagine we could even, I, I'd have to, maybe the math is simple, to find out what it costs to buy one of these machines or lease it. And then divide it by how many hours it takes roughly, you know, because we've done, we've done it for years, how long it takes to sweep the streets with it outbreak and down and being laid up for two weeks and. It's gotta be close to that number.
It's not gonna fit in the building, so therefore we're gonna have another problem.
Oh, it'll fit.
Yeah, and the licenser to run it.
Who knows, right, I'm just saying it, it, the math on that.
And they gotta be all of over three hundred grand.
They just don't make enough of them to, to be.
Right.
It's like a fire truck.
But exactly.
Fire truck shouldn't be a million dollars, it should be two fifty, but because they don't ever make two of them the same, you never get scale.
Yeah.
Now, I don't wanna dwell on the street sweep, and I think, you know, part of it is even with our switch over from, you know, the materials we're putting down during winter operations is helping. And now we're still gonna have to do it twice just to be in.
Compliance.
So, you know, we have to develop the plan to monitor the basins, and then.
They wanna know where everything's going, that's the bottom line. Okay, anything else, Randy?
So all I got, so I'll, I'll pick this and others to you, I'll leave with Cindy, and you can stop by and sign it.
Yep. Yeah, October first is, what, less than two weeks away.
Good, thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Take care of funeral.
It's worse.
It is worse. Yeah.
Cindy, you wanna turn on the lights out there, because nobody trips and falls.
Anything else for me?
Be careful, it's dark out there.
I think that's it, Randy, I don't see anything else at all.
You good? Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, no. I just turned the page. Have a seat, Randy, sorry. She said, I knew you knew something was up, I know, you, you had that quick look in your eye. He, he was looking at the door, and he's, he's like, oh shit, he's on the last page. All right, so, let's talk about plowing. I got the paperwork in front of me that we asked you for. I didn't read it, so general liabilities, at least. Did you find anything, are other towns less under policies than we're asking?
Yes, so I, I, I talked to Westfield and Agewarm.
Okay.
Their insurance requirements are lower than ours.
Oh, it's right here, right in front of me, I'm so sorry. Yep.
I, I wouldn't say they're much lower, but they're, they're.
Okay.
I can tell you that I think our insurer, we're like, our required rates are even higher than they are now.
Yeah, I'm sure.
But that's, this is where we're at, you know, the general liability, the, the big, the big one is the automobile. When I talked with Maya about this a couple of years ago, I, you know, I asked, you know, what, what the costs are. And a lot of costs are built in the automobile liability, that's really what covers the contractors when they're out plowing.
Right.
The general liability doesn't do a whole lot, unless they actually gather a vehicle and like, start shoveling, you know.
Yeah.
But they still recommend that in the, in the policy as a requirement. So, as I, as I noted, we've had a few contractors that are leaving us this year.
I, I, I've heard that, I, I don't know if anyone's actually leaving, leaving, or if they're just done plowing in general.
No, uh, Bauer is gone, he, he's told us he's done, he had four trucks last year. Um, he did all, they did all, all the lake roads.
Okay.
The tougher, um, so losing them's gonna be big.
And, and they did it for years, I think, right?
They did it for several years, yes.
Right, okay.
Yeah, so they know all the ins and outs of all those, you know, real tight, narrow, windy lake roads. So we have to go back and train the new guys coming in, all the ins and outs of those locations. And we've had several, at least two others, I think, that talked to you, who've indicated that, you know, they, this is, might be their last year.
Yeah.
Uh, unless something changes.
So Bauer's is done because of the insurance, or he's just done because of age, or?
Uh, I, I think insurance is part of it, costs are part of it.
Costs, the costs in general.
The insurance costs of maintaining the fleet, cost of gas.
Yep, no, understood.
They all, they all come out of his pocket, you know, so he's, I'm sure he's making, last couple of years have been real white years. So I'm sure they made a few bucks, but probably not enough, and maybe he can make more plow on driveways. So that's probably where they're thinking.
So our million dollar policy comes from Maya?
Their recommendation.
That's their recommendation. So Westfield and Agewarm both have Maya too, I assume, right? We all do?
I don't know, I, I would not be surprised.
I think Agewarm sat with us at the Maya table.
That's what he did, yeah, so.
I definitely think Agewarm is, I don't know about Westfield.
Gotcha.
So this is what I got from Maya a couple of years ago, and you can take a look at that. They, they wanted three million.
Yeah, at least a million, right, three million annual, yeah.
And then a million dollars an automobile.
Yeah. Recommend, recommends insurance.
But they do state that, you know, the, the, the town has the, it's our policy, so we can elect whatever we want, you know, and.
Right. Are you comfortable moving any of these numbers?
The rates?
Well, the insurance is in general.
I, I, I'd have a, you know, if Maya's recommending policy or requirement, I have a hard time recommending something that's.
Less.
A lot less than that, or less than a lot less. So I don't think, I don't see, I don't think I would recommend changing the insurance requirements.
Okay.
Maybe, and I would have, wanna have a conversation with Maya first about changing it, but like I said, the general liability doesn't do a whole lot. Although I don't think there's a whole lot of cost into the contractor built into the general liability, the cost is built into automobile.
Right. So the only other option is their, their, their hourly rate?
Their rate.
Yeah.
Uh, I haven't, I'm not aware of, directly aware, but they're telling me that some communities have given like a stipend. Okay, we'll give you, say, a thousand bucks, two thousand bucks, or whatever it is, to get your insurance policy, right?
Yeah.
And that covers their cost, I mean, because, you know, before they even, the, the, the first snow flies. They, they're out, you know, a couple of grand for their insurance policy.
Right.
So the town covers that, and then they get paid by the hour for any, any work they do. That's what some towns have done, I'm not aware of.
No, 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 and I, and I get that.
Just an option, just something that they threw out.
Yeah, and of course, you know, if you're in business, some of this insurance you carry year round, if you're not truly in business of X where you need it on your. Like for me to walk into the biggie, I need this.
Right, but you already have that through your business probably.
Correct, and I have it yearly, so I don't, I don't break it down and say, geez, I'm gonna plow for, you know, I'm gonna plow snow this winter, Christ, it's a thousand dollars, you have to insurance. So I see where they're coming from in that respect, they're not, we're not dealing with, uh, a snowplow operator that's a commercial guy year round. You know, so Tynick Landscaping probably carries every bit of this, so to him, it's not a big deal, because, yeah, that, Joe, I, I don't wanna go on someone's lawn and wreck it anyways, I gotta have this.
Right.
So this is really affecting the, the little guy that doesn't have this coverage year round, because he doesn't, you know, he drives his truck to work every day, he doesn't need it.
And then there ones that we've lost in the last couple of years.
That's what I'm saying, right.
Kind of on his own, uh, we lost Mike Bettinger a few years ago, he was on his own.
Right.
So those are the guys that are getting squeezed out.
Right, understood. Okay, so the only option A is stipend.
So that just moves around their break even point though, right?
Yeah. Yeah, it does.
Cause that's really the question, if, like, we have a year like last year, no one's gonna really complain that much, they made it, they did okay, I think. But if you have a year like we had, was it four years ago, and didn't snow?
We had three, two or three storms.
Right, and so everyone lost.
And they lost, yeah.
I get it, and, and that's part of the game, right?
Yeah.
You know? You're now, I mean, you sign up for the, the biggie, and if it rains for two weeks, right?
Yeah.
Take a virtual bath, right?
Welcome to today.
Right, you know?
No, you're absolutely right, yep. And of course, it's like all of us, I'm sure this is due now, because their policies have to be in an, an X amount of date, so. It's come up with the money now to get your insurance up to date, and, and then they feel it, just like, for my case.
But maybe that is, maybe Randy's kinda hit the point, maybe that is the trend, I mean, I, I think we should have some of the guys come in and talk about it, but I think maybe that's the trend. Like the bigger subcontractor guys that do this stuff can afford to float the risk and have the fleet of equipment that. You deal with, and yeah, and it's, it's kinda the trend everywhere, right, even the landscaper guys, you know, you're seeing less and less. Right, it's Tynick who's got twenty trucks, and he's grown, and he, and he's, he covers a lot of ground with a lot of equipment and can do a lot of jobs.
Right.
And, you know, Doug's landscaping's just not, it's not, it's tough to be competitive with those guys. I don't know, maybe, and maybe that's the trend, and, and.
Well, the new contractor we're looking to bring in to replace Bauer is Kane's Mechanical, he has four trucks. And he's got all the equipment and all the insurance, he, everything he needs, so he's.
Automatically.
Sliding right in, and, you know, he's, there's an impact, but not nearly as much as for the small guy.
Right.
So.
Cause these guys can't even, it doesn't seem like the way, like they can't even band together.
A policy?
Get five guys to buy a policy.
No.
As a group, you know, like they used to be a cooperative.
I suggested that, you know, we're trying to get together in that, that then fall, you know, and other ideas, maybe, I don't know if they could be covered through the town's insurance. They have a bigger brother, I don't know how that plays out, again, just throwing ideas out there.
Yeah, no, I got you.
Have to put this to the table to look at this.
But when I took out that print mailbox five years ago, plowed for the town, it was so cheaper for me to write a check for twenty-five hundred than I was to go through insurance.
Right, and you still paid a gazillion dollars.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, you, you're damned either way, yeah.
But we do need to resolve this, put it up quickly.
Right, that's what we got asked for. Well, I mean, having the guys come in front of us and, 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 I, I don't think see answer, only because we, this tells us the problem. Cut and dry, them walking in here and telling me why his truck costs more, and, you know, cause I'm the wise ass, I would say buy an older truck, you know? So, it is what it is. Now, can we do anything? I don't know, that's, that's our problem, more or less.
Well, if we're not care, and we have to make sure that Randy has the tools to make sure that he has the coverage.
Understood.
I, I guess, not to, I have to ask Randy, at these rates, can you, can you plow the roads? In a reasonable amount of time?
The question is, will the guys plow the roads at these rates?
So. That is the question, right?
Right.
Then, and that's, I'm deferring to you a little bit and say, Randy, well, can you get a complement of trucks to plow the roads at the level at which we do today? Cause we do a good job, can you get the same number of trucks on the road this year at these rates with knowing what the insurance market is?
And that may be the case, it may not be, I don't know, I have to, I talked to each.
In the same breath, at ten dollars more an hour, does that save the world?
Cause it's. And if you really think about it, no, because if you, how, how many hours is a, is a contractor out?
I think, well, I could go back and look, I think in average storm, average storm, they were plowing for six to eight hours.
Right, so you're talking, what, fifty hours to sixty hours a year, that they're gonna be plowing?
Well, the last few years have been better than that.
We had, uh, I think last year. We had, uh, I think last year we had thirteen plow movements. Thirteen or fourteen, last two years have been pretty similar, thirteen, fourteen plow movements, adds eight hours a piece.
Okay, so a hundred, it's a hundred hours.
Right.
Hundred four.
So there you go, at ten bucks more an hour, there's a G no.
Thousand dollars. And it puts you right between.
Per vehicle, thirteen bucks per vehicle.
No, 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 understood. Right.
Right, but if you're talking, if you have a guy that's got two trucks, you just gave him two thousand dollars, right, if, if the average winter works out. Last year was a little above, yeah, and it does tend to shake out, so.
Do, how many, do we have any one ton or larger?
Yeah.
I guess they all are now.
There's a, there's a handful of three quarter ton.
Okay, so we should be looking at the eighty more than the seventy five. Right.
Still, still the same thousand dollars.
No, it is, it is, yeah.
Ten dollars, ten dollars.
Wise asses, they're running me all day tonight, right, so I guess that's more, to me, that's more the bigger question.
Can you, is ten dollars an hour solid issue? Information if you think, or, you know, what your opinion is on that, or after you consult with the, the guys?
Get some numbers in, yeah.
You know?
Yeah, I think getting into stipends, getting into paying for their insurances, having them quit after the second storm, none of that works for me. I, I think we're asking too much out of them, and then, you know, what's our policy if they decide to not show up for the storm? You know, so the guy plows four out of five storms for you, or four out of ten, but we gave him a stipend of X to cover his insurance, I, I don't wanna get stroked. I'd rather put it into an hourly rate and say, we went up ten bucks, that gives you an extra Dino to you on an average year. It's gotta cover.
Right.
Piece of his insurance.
Right, cause I think part of being a contractor with this stuff is, I mean, some of. From my understanding, some of these guys, they're landscaping all year, so this is an opportunity, utilize the equipment that they own during the off season, right? And earn money with that equipment, right, but, but, and understandably, there's a risk that if we, if you buy the insurance that you didn't have.
Right.
That, that we're mandating that they have to buy above and beyond what they already have, that they're, they start out underwater, and hopefully you get enough snow to get above. Above that and make some money. You know, um, and, you know, we can play with, you know, that lever of by the hour, ca- moves that around a little bit, right? If you go up ten dollars an hour, you're gonna move that in. And if we have an outrageous amount of snow, they're gonna be tired and have more money, I, you know? So I think we just need to know if we can put the people on the street, um, and keep the street safe, and what that rate is to do that. And I, when was the last time we adjusted these rates?
Couple of years ago.
Which is five years.
Yeah.
Diesel fuel's kinda been on a. Not where it was five years ago, but it's probably pretty close, it's getting there, it was way down, now it's kinda come back, and most of these guys are diesel.
Look, nobody wants to spend any more money, but, you know, the fact of the matter is, uh, insurance costs more money, repairs cost more money. Diesel gasoline costs more money, everything's costing more money, so, uh, I think we've just gotta find a happy medium, you know? If we do it this way, or if you do it the stipend, but if you're gonna do a stipend, they get that money at the end of the season.
Yeah.
Not at the beginning of the season, uh, that would be one of the stipulations, but, you know. But at the same token, we don't wanna be too far out of, out of the ballpark of what other communities are paying either, right? So we wanna be, we don't wanna be the highest. We don't wanna be the lowest.
Westfield's at eighty, and, and a fourteen thousand, but T V W is ninety five, a hundred, what's a one ton, eight thousand?
So their, uh, their one ton is the eighty dollar ton we have.
Right. So we're right there.
Yeah, we're, we're right there, and I, I asked for it, Agewon's rights even given to me, so I don't have them to share with you.
Right.
I have also asked a couple of other communities, T V D and. Uh, Springfield, uh, for any kind of, so if I do get those, I will pass it on to.
Then make a recommendation to the board.
Yeah, next meeting.
Well, I think you wanted to meet with, you wanted, you still wanna meet with the contractor?
I don't know, it's up, it's up to the chair.
Honestly, I.
I think you're opening up a can of worms.
In my opinion, I don't need them parading in here, pissamony and bitching, don't need it, I understood their conversations on the phone, and their emails and their texts. I hear them loud and clear, so I don't think, I, I don't think we need to go there, there's nothing against the guys.
No.
Just, you know. We would gladly meet them when they come out to do their snow plowing, whatever they do with you guys, still have coffee and donuts and get to kick the tires on the truck still, or do we not do that anymore? Do you still, do you still have the guys come in, I mean?
Yeah, we do, uh, we, they don't all show up, but we do, uh, something upstairs, we just come in, just recap.
Yeah.
Process.
So we could meet them at that time.
Sure.
So.
Boy, I think, it's been effective, right, I think we.
Listen, we wanted to do, we wanted to discuss it.
Look at it.
I didn't, I just don't need a, and I don't need an argumentative audience, and I don't need to put anyone in a bad position over ten bucks an hour. Or eleven dollars an hour, or five bucks an hour, it doesn't work for anybody.
Yeah, I mean, if you, you bring in the group, let's, let's face it, let's be honest.
The next thing.
Everybody wants more money.
Yeah, yeah.
So we know that.
We've heard them.
We know that, we know things have gone up, that's why Randy makes a recommendation, and I'm gonna support it, and, and, there you go.
So you give us something, we got, do we have two weeks, is there contracts that need to be, you're okay? Okay. No, 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 I don't know.
This is New England, dude.
October.
Yeah, seven years ago, eight years.
So there's nothing pending on there and with you or nothing?
Two thousand and eleven.
That has to be in by a certain date?
Seven week ahead of it.
It's our own deadline, so it's nothing, it's mother nature's deadline.
Right, but you also, but other people are making commitments to other, they may be making commitments to other towns around this time or near it. So we should be cognizant of that as well, so we're, we're doing what we need to be doing, and if you need me, Frank.
And the other gentleman is all done for sure?
I'm pretty certain, but I can reach out to him just.
I would, I don't know, we're looking at trying to help him a little bit, and see if he would reconsider thinking about it, at least the next two weeks. All right, thank you, now, Randy.
Now you can go.
Can we go? Uh, so I have, uh, new business, or old business, anything on the old business that we needed to discuss today?
Well, this is related to old business, you know, last night at the two hundred fiftieth anniversary.
Oh, how'd it go?
It was very productive, uh, but they did vote to expend the first amount of money. On postage and, uh, envelopes and, uh, little sticky points. And, but they did set a limit on it of three hundred dollars, and we don't meet, we meet monthly. And my concern is if the postage or the mailing runs a little bit higher.
What are we posting and mailing?
Uh, it's, it's basically going out to four hundred of the businesses in the community. Making them aware of the two hundred fiftieth and doing a survey that we'd like them all to respond to. If they respond to it, they will be listed on the website and listed in any publications.
Cause they responded?
Right, because we're, we're trying to get them involved, and, uh, it doesn't cost them anything to do the survey.
Sure, sure.
And then we're going to, once we have their attention, talk about how they would like to participate in the two hundred fiftieth celebration.
Right.
Uh, some, and a lot of the thought was, it would benefit the town, the citizens, and also benefit the businesses financially.
Right.
Uh, because, uh, for one example, if, if we did like the spirit walk. Uh, maybe all the pizza places would have a spirit walk coupon or discount, uh, at the end of the day. Where they could go there and get a, a dollar off a pizza or something like that. So anyways, uh, what I'm asking is, if we would be willing to, out of our gift account, if there was a shortfall. Make up the difference, just so they wanna get the mailing out this week.
Is that a motion?
Second.
Is that in favor?
Aye.
Um, did you at least review the survey, what it says?
Uh, I have not gone over the survey, uh, myself. It was gone over by the events committee and by the chairman.
Perfect, we're done.
So I.
I'm assuming there's a spot for email, so you won't have to.
That's the big thing, there's all sorts of ways for them to.
Reach out.
And, and the biggest thing was, we want your email address, so that everything can be done electronically.
Yes, awesome, anything else on the old business?
No.
Plus, I, I found more and more now, stuff that gets mailed, doesn't get handled. Stuff that gets emailed to a person gets handled, you know, even, um, golf tournament invitations or stuff like that from other civic organizations.
Cause you can't get to the right person.
Yeah, it just comes to, you know.
Your secretary, she throws it out.
Whatever, but if I get an email, or the person gets the email who did it last year.
Yeah.
Well, this was kind of trying to begin the process.
Yeah, absolutely.
But at least try to get businesses talking about it.
Absolutely.
And get them involved early.
I did meet the lady from Westfield at the Taste of Westfield, when she figured out. When she figured out who I was, I couldn't get away, I bought a shirt, a few other things. I think forty hours later, I was allowed to walk back to my booth so I could raise money to pay for everything I bought. But, nice shirt, and it's a fundraiser.
Yep.
Um, great gal, would love to sit down and talk to whoever.
This is what I told you.
Whoever would listen to listen about all the mistakes they have made.
We are, we are learning a lot from our sister community.
She goes, I have so many mistakes I made, I would love to tell you about, so you don't do that, so anyways, that was it for that, anything on the new business?
No.
All right, meeting to adjourn.[1792.94]